Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this January 3rd Board of Delta County Commissioner meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
Okay, any additions to the agenda?
I have none.
Agenda approved as presented. Now we will open up the floor to constituent time. For the newcomers in the room, I will let you guys know also that there is nothing on our agenda about land use code or land use code changes. So if you were here to see that, you, it is, that was something that was incorrectly placed on Facebook. So it is now we're going to open up the floor for constituent time. Um, does somebody have the clipboard and the sheet hand here?
Yeah, right here. Oh, I have first name, John.
Shall I step up to the microphone?
Just a minute. We're, we're gonna wait, we're gonna wait for the list and then we'll go, go on the list here. I mean Carl's at microphone. So what, what we're gonna need to do, if you have chosen to speak constituent time, I need you to come up here to the front, have a seat, speak into the microphone so it can be recorded. We need to state your name and address for the record. Uh, we have a lot of people here, so I'm gonna ask that you keep, uh, keep your information. Just a minute, sir. We need to, we need to go through the list here, so. Um, so I need to ask that you keep your, uh, your comments concise and to the point. If you start to ramble or get too unnecessary topic, I'm going to cut you off. So we want to allow everybody their chance to speak, but we're gonna do it in a, in a calm, polite manner. So, um, we're gonna start with the top of the list with Jacob Dahlman.
Hi there. Uh, is this thing on?
Yes.
My name's Jacob Dahlman. I live at thirteen ninety-five Black Rock Canyon in Crawford. Um, I came to address the, the issue that was going around on Facebook and I do realize that, uh, information may have been misled. Uh, I am more curious to know, uh, what the agenda is today and can somebody say very clearly what that is to the audience so that they're aware of what is happening?
Uh, you know what? I will, I will go through the agenda. This is our, this is our annual reorganizational meeting. So the, uh, we will have the appointment of Chairman and Vice Chairman of this board, uh, committee appointments. Um, and then we have discussion for the vacancy of the county surveyor. Uh, the county treasurer has a resolution authorizing deposits for investment. Uh, we have a ratification for the health department for a, uh, grant. Uh, we have a letter of concurrence for Colorado Parks and Wildlife regarding Switzer Lake. We have a support letter regard for Delta Montrose Electric. And then we have, um, the Experimental Aircraft Association is, has a presentation and then we will go over calendar. After that will be, uh, county attorney time for, uh, airport discussion and then a executive session for real property after that. So that is, that is what is on the agenda.
Thank you.
And there is no planning on the agenda.
Yes, I appreciate that. So, uh, in, in the future, um, if you could tell the audience what the single source of truth or any meetings are and.
That's, that's always, it's always on the website.
Okay.
Get, go on the website, click on the, uh, email link and get on the list and you will be emailed every time there is a, a meeting, every time there's an agenda.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, John Reed?
My name is John Reed. I, um, live in Crawford, three oh three Elm. And I'm partly here to support my son and Jacob. And, and I wanted to see when I wanted to be here. I I'm wondering what source how was the, this code sourced?
Sir, I'm, I'm, we, we, this, this is, this is constituent time. We're, we're not gonna, we're gonna not, we're gonna avoid the back and forth conversations. This is your chance to tell us. I, I, I answered the question on the agenda just because it was pertinent. Um, that, that's a, that's a question that can't, it can't be answered in a short amount of time.
Why not? It's either.
Okay, you can go to, okay, sir, you can go to the website, you can look at the master plan, you can read the code. It's all on the website.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay.
I want to say that I've had bad experiences with code enforcers. They put me out of business in Commerce City. And, and then we were looking at a a planned development in Colorado Springs. It was Prairie Sun Village. And Colorado Springs codes prevented it from ever getting off the ground. And I had sold my property in Commerce City in order to try to become a part of this village. And, uh, so the laws of, uh, the laws are in place because let me say it, people are stupid and the laws are for stupid people. And, uh, so these laws have to they're for your safety. That's one thing. The International Code Council has ICC safe on their, for their website. And, uh, people have to be responsible for their, uh, for their lives. So anyway, a lot of people want to talk, so I I'll leave it there.
Thank you. Ray Whack, I'm not sure. Did you want to speak?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Thomas Barkley? No, you didn't want to speak. Uh, Roger Clark. No, you didn't want to speak. That's right, sir. Celeste Woski?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Celeste Woski, twenty-one, one-twenty Apple Lane in Eckert. Um, I came like everyone here for the zoning. Um, it may have been misadvertised. However, you can see from the attendance here that it's a very important subject. And while I appreciate your position that that's not on today's agenda, I would like to put out there that this needs to be better advertised to the public. You could see one poster on Facebook reached all these people, whereas your policy, it appears to be, it's our responsibility to go to your website and sign up to be notified when these happen. And the average working person doesn't necessarily have the time to do that. My husband works nonstop. He, he's a subcontractor. He's always working. Um, I work, so that's not always the thing to do. Um, now that we know, we can take five minutes, sign up for your notifications. Over there, a lot of people out there who don't know this. Um, there needs to be better communication with when these meetings are going to happen. And also, um, I would stress that the items in that use that I looked up that specifically applied to us as a home business, we're a plumber, walk out of the home, it doesn't affect our home or our neighborhood or anything, because we can keep our items in our garage, our shed, and such as that. It's not out in the yard. So we can keep a, a pleasant home atmosphere. According to the new codes, we're not going to be allowed to do that. And that puts us basically out of business or we have to double our rates so we can go rent a storefront or property to store our tools and materials in. You're basically, uh, harming your subcontractors in the county. And that's a major concern. We are too young to retire. We have a long ways to go. Yeah, I don't want to leave this county. But if, if you put us out of business, I don't, I don't know what else to do. And that's basically what will happen. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Kathy Clark?
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time.
I want to say that I think you are doing a good job and I think there are a lot of things that, um, need to be said by the public that we have gotten lax about doing and hopefully we can come to future meetings and talk with you and be part of this process. Celeste said an awful lot what I would have said. There's just a lot of things in the code that is being talked about that should receive more consideration. There's a lot of doublespeak in it. Like you can live in a recreational vehicle forever with infrastructure, but if you're building, you can only live in it for a year. Well, that does not work for a lot of people because my husband and I built our house in seventy-nine, took us five years. You know, so there are things like this that I believe need to be discussed. Water needs to be discussed more. You know, we went through this process. We found a way to get water to our property here recently. And that's all good and said, but a lot of people can't afford it. Drill, drilling a well does make, not make the water good. It doesn't. There's a lot of ways to get water besides a municipality or putting into it, you know, your own municipality water. You can't haul water anymore. We're not supposed to because I was told by the health department several times, it's not safe. And yet with housing for migrant workers, they can haul water for up to three months and according to that, it's safe. So you see what I'm saying? There's a lot of doublespeak within this document. And that's all I'm going to say. We'll be here for the next planning commission meeting. And we need to be more cognizant to help with this and we have not been. We have our pretty little house on the mountain and we've become complacent as constituents of Delta County. And I think that has to end. But I do thank you for your time and this is well written for the most part. I'm not talking about commercial buildings. There does need to be planning, development and, you know, different things on that. I'm mostly talking about residential, about being very narrow minded on the residential stuff in this document. So I'll be here for the next meeting. I want to be part of the health. I want to be part of that process. I don't want to sit at home in front of my fireplace drinking my coffee all the time. I'm not here for me. This does not affect us. But this does affect many friends of ours and family of ours that are in construction and plumbing, as I said, in these small businesses that it will affect. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it. And I'm not saying you're doing a bad job because I do not think that is true. But I do think there needs to be more thought put in this before any changes are made. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Lysander Holiday?
Good morning. Thank you for hearing constituent time so much for us this morning. My name is Lysander Holiday. I'm at four-two-eight-one-two Kinney Mesa Lane in Leonia. Uh, six years ago, my mother and I brought our internet business from California to Delta County. Uh, we were a little cottage industry in my garage and uh, last year we were, we needed a, a new space. I looked at land use code, we were looking at property. We bought a place at three-nine-five-eight-five Lund Road, which was according to the twenty-eighteen, twenty-twenty-one code, uh, light rural, light industrial without retail, uh, which was great. We moved in, we poured a hundred thousand dollars into it. We, uh, including myself, we sustained seven households in Delta County, uh, and spent a lot of our profits here. My concern is that now we will be non-compliant on that property and if we are so heavily invested and what will we have to do to become compliant and how will that affect our seven households that, that rely upon us? Um, that's my personal stake in it. Uh, from the bigger picture, I'm concerned about affordable housing in Delta County. It's surprising that this isn't issue here. Um, I was doing a little, I, I did some reading. I found an interesting study. I'd be happy to pass along. Um, there've been many researchers who have analyzed survey data, uh, zoning survey data across the U.S. and found quotes that more restrictive zoning as measured by their planners' responses is strongly correlated with less housing production and higher housing prices. So this gentrification area, uh, and you know, of course, we need a diversity of housing choices in Delta County that serve different budgets, different needs and sizes. And we do this by minimizing unnecessary permitting and procedural costs for single-family detached, uh, and ADUs among others. Um, personally, I might be shot down for this, but I'd like to see those procedural costs passed on and expenses passed on to short-term rentals. Airbnb, the Airbnb effect has really, I think, the single factor that's destroyed affordable housing more than anything. And that isn't, that is very much, uh, a center of industry in Delta County. We should let those folks who are lucratively profiting, paying off multiple mortgages with short-term rentals, we should disincentivize that with our land use code and encourage them to rent to long-term tenants and, and residents of Delta County. Um, and lastly, I'm in concern that such procedural costs, uh, will, will be reflected when voters go to polls and they're asked to raise taxes for things like Back the Badge or our struggling library district. Um, people already complain about high taxes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Elizabeth DeGee?
Hi, Elizabeth DeGee. I live on Black Rock Road in Pana, Colorado. Um, I work for a nonprofit called Cora Farming Alliance and do a lot of advocacy for um, young farmers and aspiring farmers. Um, I am just getting into this, um, and like learning more about implications of the code. Um, and it seems like there's been a lot of work to look at like environmental setbacks and like certain things like the ADUs. It's very clear that that work has been done with farmers and with people who are working on the land. So I think that it's just really important that that in the planning process that those people are informed and, um, that there's like a real effort to get them here. And a lot of that is like not your responsibility. Um, but I do think that the future of farming is dependent on experimentation, um, and finding creative and innovative ways to do things. Um, and that a lot of people have moved here to be able to do that. Um, my farm enterprise has been one hundred percent experimentation and bootstrapping. Um, so I think that if you're going to have a code, then you need to like incorporate that and people need to be able to have less oversight, um, and like a permitting process for different aspects related to farm business.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Excuse me. Can a person get on the list if they?
Here, let me, uh, here we go. We'll recirculate the list here. You have not signed up.
And I also have another question. There's quite a few people out in the hallway. Can those people come in here as well?
Uh, we can squeeze in as many people as, as, as possible here, so.
Right. Well, I think most of the people here was.
Is there any way to turn off this back projector? Is there a need for it today?
Yeah, that's for.
Do you need it right now? Is there any constituents speaking?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know if we, I don't know if we're capable of shutting it off separately without shutting off the rest of the system, so. Okay, Julia Morton Keel?
Ladies? You can have, any of you can have one, sir.
Good morning. My name's Julia Morton Keel and I live at three-five-five-six-one Highway one thirty-three in Hotchkiss. Um, and I do kind of have a question. I'm not looking for an answer. I think it's something to maybe mull over in your mind. I guess first and foremost for me, um, I don't see how these codes permits, da-da-da, how we benefit from it other than, I think it's a way for the county to charge money for permits and da-da-da. But as an individual farmer, I think that kind of makes life a little bit harder. Um, and I think, yeah, that's, I just don't see how it benefits that we really benefit from it. Aside from like someone else had said, commercial, uh, zoning and stuff like that. I do believe, you know, codes and permits and stuff should be in place for that. But as far as, you know, the, us farmer people out there, um, I think it's just gonna make life a little bit, you know, not as easy as it could be. And that was a big reason that, uh, my husband and I moved over here was to have a little bit more freedom to, you know, do what we would like. And it's, uh, you know, I don't know. It's kind of like having a giant HOA for the entire county as far as I'm concerned. Somebody telling you, you're not rolling your hose upright. You're not doing this right. And that's not why we moved over here. So just, and how does, how does Delta County really benefit from this aside from, you know, money for permits and stuff? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Uh, Mike, I got you on the next on the list, but we'll, we got you as an agenda item later. Okay, sorry. Um, Stephen Reed?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name's Stephen Reed. I live at two-four-eight Fourth Street in Hotchkiss, Colorado. We've all heard and I just found out that the concerns that we're having with these codes were done in twenty-twenty-one. I am amazed that I didn't hear about it either. Now, so as census on books, we need to find out people that are, there's a lot of people here that are obviously distressed about facts of the changes and what you're doing to telling us what we can do on our land in the first place. I'm not sure if we had a proper opportunity to voice our opinions. This is something that is fundamental to me since it was, I was born on it. I am third generation Colorado. I've got two more generations after me. Doesn't make any difference. This is, it's what we, I, what I'm interested in is who do I talk to about seeing videos of any of these meetings during the planning committee, not commission. I know that you may or may not be able to give me that information, but I, I'd like to see the meetings and find out why they were come up in the first place. Just because it has to be done doesn't mean that it had to be done more like the Front Range or anywhere else. Why do we have to change the things that are working pretty good? I'd like to find out. I'd like to be able to review those and have anybody who wants to or, and make available on internet or whatnot these proceedings. If they're here and those things were discussed in an open forum, then the community has a right to see those. And I think uh, website or whatnot, um, where we can go to see those meetings would be a good idea. If not, I'll look at it myself anyway. But I need to have a train of who to talk to to get those, uh, to get those meetings. Because allowing those obvious discussions about things like a plumber can't keep his tools in his garage or his plumbing supplies. There's something about what? No more than a square foot sign. I didn't get rid. This is what I saw on Facebook too was just like a Lou Lamour book. You know, I've posted in Albuquerque in little print. And the only possibility that somebody, because I didn't hear about it last year or two years ago. So, thank you very much. Says, who, I'm asking a question. Who do I see to be getting the tapes on these planning meetings where these codes were discussed? And how can the rest of the community find that out?
Uh, email Lindsay and she will put you in, in touch with where they need, where they can be accessed on the website.
I need, would you write down your?
I'll give you a part.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Reed, I'm gonna caution you. Has Facebook always been the best source of information?
Hey, you got me here.
I'll agree with that. And, and I, and I, I don't, we're not, we're not gonna go into the, we're not going to get into back and forth here. Okay? Um, I, I will tell you, we have put it on our own Facebook page. We have, we have put it in the newspaper. It's constantly in the newspaper. Um, you know, we, 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 you know, the, the, the county has a limited budget and to have an active constituency and is tough, so.
Yes, sir. I understand that very much, but it's also so easy and so cheap to put something, you know, just to put a notice in whatever the social media is that you want to go to.
And, and, and sir, we do. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move you along here because.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Uh, Mike Wolf?
All right, my very lady. My name is Nico Wolf. I'm four-one-five-one-three Needle Rock Road in Crawford. I'm hearing about the same thing everybody else is hearing about. And since I was last here, I finished reading the entire code. I read the entire master's plan. I read, uh, minutes and many of the meetings. I read all kinds of stuff. And, uh, I do want to say first, thank you so much for opening constituent time at the beginning of your meetings. We appreciate it. Um, but having read the whole thing, uh, one is, like, none of us want this applied to our private rural residential and agricultural lives. And the second is how far it has, um, gone astray from what the master zoning plan, I hesitate to use the word, but promised us. I mean, it does assurances. So, um, specifically on your website, uh, deltacountingplan.com, there is a frequently asked question page. And some of those answers, they attempt to provide assurance that this code is going to be good and welcome benefits for our lives. Thank you. For example, uh, one person says, oh, I hear we're getting building codes. And the answer is nope, no building codes. The land use code's only deal was subdivision and zoning. That's all. Uh, yet on page one forty-three of here, it says they may require other approval or permits, which may include item B adopted building codes. Um, page one sixty-two again references, uh, building codes and references the, uh, vested property rights section. Now this quote, this quote is where it really is really telling me. It says, in Delta County, you actually have only have three private property rights you can do without getting the county's approval. Building a home, agriculture except for capos and running a small business at your home. Everything else requires a permit. Instead of seeking approval for almost everything through cumbersome, unfair and often unfair process, property owners will be allowed much broader range of uses that are allowed as of right with no review. And that goes on to say, we believe wholeheartedly that the proposed land use code increases your private property rights by increasing what you're allowed to do by right on your property and by reducing cumbersome red tape for uses of your property that do require approval. Yet table two B currently found on pages thirty-four or thirty-six of this document has been barely stripped of everything that's considered an allowed use and replaced with permitted uses. And the previous response was, uh, well, you, you can build a house without a building permit, but because you need access, adverse set of permits, et cetera, then while it's not actually allowed, it has more permit. Yet I've heard from people who have, uh, been building houses for others and they called for, um, to add a commercial activity to the same place. And the planning department said, oh, so you're building a house? Uh, where's your development permit? So now there's a development permit in there, which to me is a building permit without inspection. So already, uh, this is going, you know, that, that's already in place where we don't want to go. Um, and additionally, so the code still says for those couple of As that are left, that no review is required. Yet on the planning website, it says allowed and permitted uses must begin with a development application and that must be approved by its staff. So already the, uh, procedures are going against what this code is doing. Um, let alone how far this code has gone from the, the master zoning plan. And then, uh, page thirty-seven suggests that any proposed use has to be determined whether it's principal, seasonal, temporary accessory, a shed, and it goes as far as saying a backyard playset. So this is to suggest that we're gonna ask permission to do absolutely anything. And, uh, I want to know where is that broad range of uses that are allowed as of right and no review? Because that's what we're all here for. That's what we want. That's why I moved to Delta. Because that's what we're all here for. That's what we want. That's why we moved to Delta County, to be free to build and uh and do things like this.
It's fit for time. This isn't a, isn't a, a performance. So let's keep things concise here. Thank you.
So uh another fact was uh someone had a question about their, does their home business, they looked at the old regs and said, you know, square footage and whatnot. They said, well, now exceeds that. So do I subqualify? And then the answer on the page says, well, the new land use code does not set minimum square footage of a minimum employee counts for home businesses and cottage industries. And that was accurate in the twenty twenty one version, um which said simply accessory business use of the home is allowed by right. Uh yet this current version has a, is full of restrictions again that were in the specific development regulation about what qualifies as a home business or cottage industry. So we're all here to live our lives in peace. We're here to build what we need, when we needed to shelter our homes and our families and support our families and our farms. And we take responsibility for what we create. We understand what it means to be responsible for our lives, for the building we just build over our homes and um, you know, we're not going to build things that are falling our heads. And quite frankly, we know better what to put where on our land than anybody in an office who has never set foot on that land. There's so much more to talk about, but there's basically, you know, this code goes so far against what was assured by that master zoning plan. And if that is just a guideline, just a suggestion, why was so much time and money spent on making it if we're just going to go flying off somewhere else? And respectfully, sir, uh what works in an area of half a million people is not really appropriate for some places, not even thirty two thousand people in the whole county. Um, so again, commissioners, we're asking you to please stop this to, to give us those exemptions back, to, to have it live up to the uh, the words that, that were given about broadening property rights and not restricting. And uh honestly, I mean, how many people do you have to hear from though in order to really see that we don't want it?
Good question.
So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Uh John Roberts.
All right. My name is John Roberts. I live at seventeen twenty eight Highway one thirty three County, Colorado. First of all, I'd like to see.
Sir, sir, you need to address the board. This constituent time to address the board.
Of all the people here who are in favor of this, hands, hands, including the hallway, hands.
Of what?
People who are in favor of these building codes.
Sure, sure. There are no building codes, but.
The land use codes, land use codes. Who's in favor of this right now? Who's here? Even the people who are in favor aren't raising their hands. Why? Why are you raising your hands? Remember of the people for the people by the people. I see your tie is red, white and blue. Do you remember who you were representing? Of the people. Are you trying to come from the Chinese Communist Party playbook?
Sir, this, we're, you're pushing this a little far, but you don't need to pack. I haven't. Well, I, what I'm going to do is I'm going to pause you. I'm going to encourage everyone to review the code before we changed it. Stop, sir, sir, stop just a moment. Just a minute. Stop, sir. Just a moment. The code before twenty twenty one. There are actually numerous places that this offers more freedom than that prior code. So.
And is that in accordance with what the man who was just here was sharing? No. Okay, who is it that is influencing you? Are you Republicans? Are you Rhinos? Are you conservatives standing for the people or against the people? That's what I want to ask you here. That's it. Thank you.
Barb Hewlett.
Barbara Hewlett, twenty two eighteen fifty nine hundred Road. I bring history. I bring ten years of history. This reminds me of the hot settlers which brought this back to the master plan. And I cannot even believe as conservatives that all of you ran on the conservative ticket and were elected on the conservative, conservative ticket. This looks like Ocasio-Cortez's Green New Deal is what this looks like. And how do we bring Agenda twenty thirty to Delta County? Is by writing something like this and doing something like this. And you guys know my history and you know how long I've been trying to get you guys to stay away from the United Nations and the regulations that they bring into each of our counties. I'm here with history. And I'm here to tell you that I have been emailing you for twelve years, ten years. You know, you cannot say that you do not know what is going on because I've been warning you for that long. And that's all I have to say.
Alina.
Alina Vida, four four five one six, you know, Rock Road, Crawford. When I'm reading the land use code, um the two hundred and thirty page document, I'm seeing a lot of power that the planning department director is putting in his hands. And some of those things, um some of his decisions are not appealable according to this document. In addition, you make all of you not responsible and not liable for any damages to persons or property resulting from any inspection, enforcement or review as required or permitted by this code. How's, how, how can this one unelected man with so much power and no responsibility and no accountability be dictating what we can do in our homes? Also, I hear that the planning department staff doubled in size due to this document. Our libraries are getting closed. Our transfer stations shut their doors. Is this really where our money should be going? As far as I understand, these documents were created, at least in the beginning, in order to prevent costly litigations. I don't know if they will do that, but surely all the money now is going to creation and implementation and maintenance of the orders in this document. You're trying to make fair and predictable, something that by nature is not. Talk to the man in Crawford who lost his home in a fire or a woman with debilitating health condition who needs care from her family and needs to have her family moved on her land. Talk to a man with a catastrophic medical bills, struggling to get back on his feet. They'll tell you that they never thought they'll be here, but they are. And with this code, you're making it harder, if not impossible, for them to get by and live decently. When you talk to the people, you will hear how we're focusing on surviving now from day to day financially and emotionally. These are hard times. State and county governments are getting federal money as a relief from lockdowns. Big corporations were benefiting disproportionately from enforced monopoly. Meanwhile, small businesses that still are, that are still here against all odds are mostly on their own. Even worse, you're putting more restrictions on them and preventing able men and women that reside in this coun- county from providing for themselves. This code is restricting the survival strategies of men and women in this county. That is wrong. You are harming us. You're putting unnecessary harm on us. These times call for resilience and flexibility. Not call, not, they do not call for rigid regulations and bureaucracy. They don't call for development permits for activities that were allowed and are natural rights from the very beginning. Our land use and property rights are protected by the constitution and natural law. If you restrict the use of our property, what is given in return to the landowners for that order? By removing the lawful right of private property use and restricting with a permit, you are converting my right into privilege. That is unconstitutional and not moral. When you grant these permits to us, you can just as easily, easily take them away. This is what is meant by noncompliant permitted. A language that we hear from your code enforcer agent. When you look at the organizational chart, we are here, we here are at the top. Yet we'll be living the consequences of the decisions you make on a piece of paper in your office. This is why we're here. This is why I'm here. I wanted to give you a perspective of a first generation immigrant from a post-communist country.
I just have a simple question for you. I can't seem to get an answer from anyone else. So is a stewardship area as proposed now, is that a building lot? Well, right here.
Carl, I mean, it's, it's designed, it's designed as a, as a open space. It's to preserve, preserve the, to preserve, preserve the master plan. The master plan that was developed called for open space.
Well, right here on my county packet, it says minor plots, two lot subdivisions can be approved administratively by the director. There is no public hearing required. The director can take final action on the minor plot unless the variances are approved. A final plot must be accepted by the director once the conditions of approval are met prior to reporting the plot. The next paragraph says boundary line adjustments can be approved administratively by the director. There is no public hearing required when, with amending legal lots or with no variance is required, even if the lot does not meet the minimum size required by zoning. I own six hundred and seventy acres on Ash Mesa Road. I farm. I have been trying for eleven months to get a permit to divide two lots off for two people that helped me on my farm. I can't get a straight answer. If I have packet after packet after packet of requirements on this. Every one of my neighbors has been misinformed as to what my intentions are. This packet right here shows hypothetical possibilities that they designed for my property. Saying that I, they were, they would support six lots or seven lots, but yet I can't get a permit or can't get two lots. I will show you if you'd like to see them, all the hypotheticals on twenty one pages of a plan that the planning department sent my neighbors, turning some of my neighbors that are here against me thinking that I lied to them about my proposal to get two lots. Here's a scenario over here that shows seven lots prepared by the planning department. I have no interest in seven lots. I'm trying to get two lots on a piece of property that cannot receive irrigation. To put two of my people that have, that teach school and have taught school for forty five years here and worked for me in the summers and I promised them a lot when they retired. They're waiting. Their leases run out here soon. Why has it taken nine months of not being able to get an answer? I'd like to know that. And I'd like for you to look at this packet or the, that's, that they sent by neighbors.
I.
And I've got a letter here for, uh for, then I was going to have signed by all my neighbors.
Here's, here's my card. I'd, I'd like, I'd like you to email me and we'll, we'll get to the bottom of this.
All right.
Rand. Rand, Rand Thompson.
And would you like to, a copy of the letter?
If, if you've got, if they've got extra copies, we'll take your copies. Yes.
We got one for you tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you.
And they'll be signed here in the next week.
Thank you.
I've been waiting for the holidays to end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Charis Ford.
My name is Charis Ford and four one nine Stall Road. Uh I appreciate everybody coming to discuss these things. I think they have a huge impact on our community. I also appreciate uh the challenge that you guys are uh faced with having to come up with something that could work for such a large group and such a diverse group of people. Um, I think uh my main, uh, you know, in addition to being a landowner, uh and I manage a thousand acre ranch. One of the reasons I love Delta County is because of how diverse uh and down to earth and sensible, uh even though not necessarily similar, the, the people who live here are. I have always found that to be uh extremely comforting and, and uh interesting. And that's why we moved here. I also moved here uh because of the what we might consider lax building codes, lax uh regulations, not heavily regulated. And I think uh, I'm not alone in a, in the, in the population of Americans who like to have less uh meddling from bureaucratic entities in our daily lives, on our land, in our families. Um, and like I said, there's so much common sense in this community. I think that we are lucky uh to have neighbors uh and, and community members who are not likely to go out there and shoot themselves in the foot, to put the playground in the wrong place. Uh, and I think um basically the reason I moved here, um the, the kinds of restrictions, this kind of one size fits all feeling about a, 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 a planning, a, a, a zoning and planning direction, the things seem to be heading under the guidance of, 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 of the board that you guys are currently working with. It feels a little, uh, it feels a little bit like burr cut and pasting something from another community, maybe one that's more uh suburban, maybe one that's more uh gentrified or about to be more gentrified than the one we have been enjoying and love here in Delta County. And I just don't think uh taking a framework from another kind of part of America and slap it here makes sense. And it doesn't make sense for a couple of reasons. One is because what we have is very special. You know, we're between places like Aspen and Telluride. Um, I recognize that the value of these properties are going up. I recognize that there's a change in some of the people that are moving into this part of the world, but let's not let them get here and find just the rest of America. Let's not get them, let's not have the people who come to this community find out it's just another milquetoast generica. Let's, let's keep this character rich and unique. It's an amazing place and with full of smart people. And what I would say is the real responsibility uh of, of your board, in my opinion, uh in that kind of by the people for the people would be to just to put a hold on this. We got it, guys. We know what the right way to do this is. We're going to cut, we're going to handle all this business. Uh, stop doing that and invite uh the smartest and most willing people from this community who are available to read these codes, available to sit down and be part of a, a community uh facet to your, your work as a board. Um, that's my request. Uh, I believe in this community, uh the kinds of changes that, that we're hearing people's concerns about are the kinds of things that have me less excited about being here. I moved here because of the way it was and I would be inclined to pull out because of the way it might go. And I'm not, that's not a threat. I'm just saying, I think that's probably true of a lot of us. We're here because it's country. We're here because it's free. We're here because we can trust each other to be sensible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Spotten, uh seven, six, five Southeast Pinion Cedar Ridge. Congratulations. I guess you've opened up the uh constituents in uh Delta County. Um, the reason I'm here today is I live in a subdivision. Um, the reason I'm here today is I live in a subdivision, so a lot of this doesn't personally affect me, but I'm a general contractor here in Delta and I represent past clients, current clients, and people that don't even know that they're moving here yet. These land use codes just within the last ninety days have affected some of my past clients. I guess I need to take a little bit of responsibility of not being completely informed with all the land use codes for Delta County, so I need to do a better job of that. But where I have gone and submitted things to the county, it's been approved by the planning department and by the health department. And then once projects have gotten started, these land use codes have gone back and affected my clients. So I think there's three reasons why we're all here today. Now, I guess we all feel like we haven't been informed. Two, misinformation that's out there. And three, contradiction. There's things within these codes and your different departments that are contradicting each other. So maybe we need to go back and, and look at some of those.
Kevin Pike.
Kevin Pike, twenty-seven, sixty-three, Big Spring Retro. I'm one who admittedly doesn't, am not much very informed in this till very recently, so I'm not. I'm not read on this. But I do, in, in what I do know of it, just an example, I guess, take forward. I know a young man who served in our military who his plan is, has property paid for upon retirement so that he can afford his plan, which is, it looks like not gonna be possible at this point. So I think that, I think we need to address those, those types of, you know, the, the unexpected changes, the unintended consequences. And you know, we have, from the federal level, we have land use management going on, the BLM, can't do this out here. So now it feels kind of encroaching and it is now on the personal property. And so you know, to me, i- it feels like another restriction, another, another right that's, that's gone. I have friends who moved here from the front range recently and they said they lived there because the amazing freedom and recreation. And then they visited here and immediately moved here because wow, that feels like freedom. That's, that's where I wanna be. And I'm just afraid that this is, this is encroaching a bit on those, those freedoms.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, okay, do, we got people on the computer that would like to have some time here. We have hands up? I'm sorry? James McCain?
Hello there. Thank you for your time.
Go ahead, James.
Yeah, um, thanks for your time. We're all here today because we don't agree with this code. And it's funny how a couple posts on Facebook can inform the community better than our own government can. And just because you're not voting or, or dealing with the code today doesn't mean that you guys aren't planning on enacting this code, so. None of us agree with this and we moved out here to be free and this code is specifically taking our liberty and what we can do on our property. And most of us out here have ten different jobs, just to try to make it work. And with the economy the way it is, this is completely restricting the ability for us to be creative. And that's what makes this county so beautiful, is the creativity. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, that's, all the people we have signed up are online to speak. Yes, please, come, come forward, state your, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeannie Brison and my address is four zero seven five eight German Creek Drive in Peonia. And my husband wasn't able to be here today because he's working. He was a retired contractor and we bought a piece of property in twenty nineteen to build our own home. We're still in the process of moving our own home. And we have gotten electrical approval. We've gotten a rough permit. We've done the plumbing. We have our septic tank. And, you know, we don't want to be, we're halfway into our project. We probably realistically have another two years before we completely finish building our own home. But we don't want to be, you know, subjected to retro policies that are gonna affect something that we started two years ago. And, and I also wanna say that that's the reason that we moved here to Delta County in twenty sixteen was because there was, there were no building codes. And, you know, my husband knows what he's doing. He's been a contractor for most of his life. And, you know, for the most part, the people who are kind of homesteading and getting back to the land and and regenerating the soil, like we care a lot about this place and we care a lot about each other, our sense of community and cooperation with our neighbors. And like one person who's already spoken, we don't want this kind of one-size-fits-all regulation. We wanna have a certain amount of freedom to do what we want on our property without putting others or ourselves in danger. And so.
Ma'am, I can, I can assure you, there's nothing in this code that has anything to do with building codes. There is nothing retroactive. I, I, I can assure you that, that there's nothing that you have to worry about.
I do understand that, but one of, one of the concerns is that there, there are many backdoors in this current code that could create problems for people who are just trying to build their home, have a shelter and do, you know, wonderful things on their property because it doesn't fit. And I can tell you that there are things that we're doing on our piece of property to build our home that are not part of regular construction and the amount of waste that is present in the construction industry, that we're coming here to do these alternative things. And, you know, many of these regulations, whether they're in this current code or not, would restrict that kind of experimentation and proof of concept. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I move the channel three, one, four, nine, nine, Jay Road, Hotchkiss. I just had a suggestion for the county and for all the departments, for the board commissioners. So in our county, news is hard to get to people. Information is hard to get to people. But one of the best that I've found, and I use it all the time, is to use Facebook. Just by posting on your Facebook page, you're not gonna get anywhere. You need to post it to the communities because we have thousands of people on the message boards, local, some are not, but this is, and I'll admit, I'm one of them that was posting this, not to put misinformation out there, but so people know what's going on. And like it or not like it, doesn't matter to me. I just want people to understand and know what their county is up to. Good, bad, ugly, whatever, doesn't matter. But people need to know. So my suggestion is you figure out a way to use Facebook better because our newspapers aren't getting it from people. And you need to get the information out there so people know. That's just my suggestion.
Public information special.
Well, that's all right.
Got somebody on, you've got somebody on cable? I know.
And that's, that's great.
Public information.
Yeah, it's really about getting on those message boards and getting the information out there.
We had.
We have one more on the phone.
One more on the phone. Who is it?
Nicole Carpenter.
Nicole Carpenter?
Hi, yeah, I'm Nicole Carpenter at three zero four nine one, Highway ninety-two in Hotchkiss. And I support what the majority of the people have said before me, so I'll keep it short. I just wanted to add that y'all just approved land use codes last year and it took years to develop those plans. And they were hotly contested. We had community meetings. I remember participating in those. I remember going to planning commission meetings. And I don't understand why a year later, when we've barely had enough time to even exercise those codes, they're being updated again. I intend to go to the planning commission meeting and hear from myself, from them, why they're proposing these changes, but what I'm asking is to table this and give these existing land use codes a chance to be exercised and familiarized with. I mean, th- this document is dozens of pages long and I don't even know that you and the planning commissioner are that familiar with them yet. It doesn't sound like they're working that great according to some personal experiences that were brought to our attention this morning, so. That, that's what I'm asking and I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much.
You made reference to her that you weren't doing that, anything, that she didn't need to worry, but yet we have a personal thing that's happening with the man in the back saying the very opposite.
Okay, so we have, we have had an hour of constituent time. I appreciate everybody for coming out. I truly do. I appreciate an active public. What I, what I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask something of all of you, though. I'm gonna ask that all of you, if you come back to the meeting, which I pray to God you do, that you have specifics in hand. Okay? I, there are several of you that did, that brought specific issues in the code that need to be addressed. That is the best way we solve this. If everybody comes in here and says, I heard on Facebook this is happening, but you don't have specifics, it's not helping the general cause.
What if we're just gonna say, we don't need this? We already have a land use code.
Okay, so, so, okay, so I'm, I'm going to challenge you all to read the previous land use code. Because a lot of these changes that we're getting ready to make actually bring more freedom than was on there before. So, so please, I mean, a prime example is the, the one year of living in an RV during construction. It used to be three months. Okay? And that was on, that was. Okay, so, and once again, I've, I've said this, I've said this a thousand times in a thousand meetings. The only reason we have land use code is because two neighbors couldn't get along or somebody kept doing something stupid. The only reason we have this in the code is we've got too many people out there dumping raw sewage on the ground. Okay, it's, it's, I'm, I'm sorry, it, it, it is what it is.
Or you go to that person and you say, you're not doing right.
We, we do, but it, it's still, yes, okay. So, once again, I thank you all so much for coming. I please encourage you, do come back, please be involved, attend the planning commission meeting. It's, it's on, it's on the website. It's, please get on the website, get the eve notifications and they will send you every every posted meeting that's coming up and then you can be. Okay, there you go. Here, yes.
January eleventh at five thirty.
Yes.
Pay to attend these meetings, because I don't think any of us are.
Okay, so, we're, we're gonna move on to, uh, we're gonna move on to our business, the part of the meeting here. So I once again, thank you all. Uh, we're gonna take a, a, a five-minute break, so we'll be, we'll reconvene here in five minutes, so. Okay, we're gonna come back on the agenda. I appreciate everybody's patience here. County clerk.
Good morning, commissioners. I have minutes for the December twentieth, twenty-two, twenty-two Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or corrections? I also have your consideration of the liquor license renewal for a hotel and restaurant for Cheers Management LLC doing business as, as the Stonefly Cantina located at seven nine oh four Shea Road in Austin. I have not received any complaints or there have not been any issues with the sheriff's department. I received all necessary documentation and fees, so therefore I would recommend you approving that with liquor license.
I move and we approve the liquor license for Hotel and Restaurant for Cheers Management LLC doing business as the Stonefly Cantina located at seventy-nine oh four Shea Road, Austin, Colorado.
Second. Motion second on the floor. Any further discussion? Are you not on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
I also have another liquor license renewal for a hotel and restaurant and on and off premises for Business Market Marketing and Advertising Incorporated doing businesses at Ganneson River Pleasure Park located at eight nine four nine Pleasure Park Road in Hotchkiss. I've also received no complaints from the sheriff's department and received all necessary documentation and fees. Therefore, I am recommending renewal of this liquor license.
I move the board approve the liquor license renewal for a hotel and restaurant on off present premises for Business Marketing and Advertising, Inc. DBA Ganneson River Pleasure Park located at eight nine four nine Pleasure Park Road in Hotchkiss.
I second that.
We have a motion second on the floor. Any further discussion? Are you not on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay. Next item of business is to appoint the chairman and vice chairman. It's something we do annually and typically we have a cycle here. So that being said, I will step down in chair and nominate Commissioner Coontz as chairman.
I second that.
Motion second on the floor. Further discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Rest of the meeting is yours. Patrick, you had your chance, too late now. You notice I didn't leave that open there?
Please bring my coffee over here.
Would you wanna do the reorganization after?
Yeah.
Since we have several members here.
Okay. Don, thank you for your service over the years here and your service as chairman twenty twenty-two. You've done a lot for us here. Next order of business would be electing a vice chair. I would step down and nominate Commissioner Lane.
I'll second that nomination.
On favor, say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next order of business, should we step down to Lisa?
Yep.
We're gonna step down the agenda, item four, County Treasurer Lisa Foye Board's consideration of a resolution authorizing Delta County Treasurer to deposit and invest public funds. Lisa, congratulations.
Thank you. My, what I'm presenting this morning is an annual required resolution for authorizing myself to deposit and invest public funds. There are no changes to this document or no additions on, on page three for banks, government pools, trusts and other. Basically, it's what, what you've seen last year. And rates are going up.
Yes. Well, I will move that the Board adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash zero one, resolution authorizing Delta County Treasurer to deposit and invest funds.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye? Be done.
Greatly appreciated, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work. Next order of business would be item, gen- agenda item six, Board's consideration and Board's signature of a letter of concurrence regarding Colorado Parks and Wildlife purchase of two hundred and eighty-one acres adjacent to Switzer Lake State Park. Scott, welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Scott, I'm the park manager for Crawford Switzer and Peony State Parks. And I'm here today to ask for a letter of concurrence, uh, purchase two hundred and eighty-one acres to the southeast of Switzer Lake State Park. The property is currently owned by Paul Switzer, who's the grandson of Morgan Switzer, the original donator of the Switzer Lake property. The property currently, uh, two hundred and twenty-five acres is in a natural vegetation state. Fifty-five acres of it is under, uh, plant or tillage. And our goal is for the two hundred and twenty-five acres to main, leave it in a vegetation state with some trails, improve the wetland areas. And then the fifty-five acres that are under tillage, we will continue and improve it to be more for upland game birds, um, than it's currently in, like, a grass or, uh, where we sometimes. This is part of CPW's master plan for the park. We currently are in the master plan stages for the hundred and five acres we bought from Richard Morfitt two years ago. And this would just continue to develop the park and help bring visitation to Delta County.
Any questions, commissioners?
Um, I, you know, we addressed the, the master plan here a number of years ago. I, I think it's, it's a true asset in Delta County. I think it's, it's great for our, our economy. And if we, the better, if we can utilize that, the, the better it is for everybody, so. I'm, I'm encouraged, encouraged to see this take place, so.
Yes, it's nice, nice area. What year was Switzer Lake first started?
Twenty fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
And it was the year that Morgan Switzer donated the property, and the, the records aren't really clear, but they believe the first year recreation was
Was lake pre-existing then, or was donated?
No, um, the state built the dam that's there for the park. And, and the unique thing about the park, it is one of three reservoirs in the state that's solely built for recreation.
Know that. So what would be the will of the board?
I'll move that the Board adopt and sign the uh, letter of concurrence regarding Colorado Parks and Wildlife's purchase of two hundred and eighty-one acres adjacent to Switzer Lake State Park.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you for your, why don't you take this with you? Thank you, Don. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna jump down to agenda item eight, Experimental Aircraft Association, Chapter one three seven three, Mike Berry presentation. Welcome.
Thanks.
Sorry to make you wait so long.
I thought this was a veteran community. Let me pass out these cards, and not so that you know about me, although that is my card. The back of this card is a one of our posters that we like to use. The Experimental Aircraft Association, Don knows all about it, but we try to get people interested in aviation and support. It's like the greatest old man's coffee club in the world. Guys build their own airplanes. But this has to do with promoting aviation at Delta Lake. So, um, the idea is, and I talked to Mark Waterman, who's he says he's not the manager, but he's still sort of the manager there. And he said, I would have to talk to you, but the idea is that we want to put up banners on the chain link fence around the airport to promote aviation, promote, um, our young eagles. Promote smiling. Just basically use some of our five oh one C three money to get some traction. So I'm coming here for approval. Now, what I brought was on the back of my card, you'll see a poster that's four by eight foot banner in my hangar, which is a Leonardo da Vinci thing, which I'm quite fond of. But that would be one of them. There might be ten of these things, you know, as you drive from the golf course, you're approaching the fence, there would be, you know, uh, something like, uh, we dare to fly, which is the EAA saying. We we support our jo- young eagles, join us, which are, is a way to get kids flying and stuff like that. So here's an example of a banner. I don't even know what it says, because this is not mine. Young Eagles, EAA, but you get the idea. The ones I'm talking about are four by eight feet. Um, an amazing thing for people to know is that a four by eight foot banner, the highest quality, a hundred and fifty DPI, sixty-three dollars landed from Costco Printing Services. So, they're quite affordable and they're exceptional quality, so flights available. We've probably put up these two because we never fly these. We didn't even fly them in December when we had an event. So you're getting the idea, is that we wanna put these banners up on the chain link fence, and that's what I'm looking for approval for. I don't need, I don't know if you need to review each banner or distrust us.
I, I, I don't think reviews necessary. I, I don't even know that necessarily need a formal motion of the board. I, I think this is a great idea, promotes, promotes the airport, promotes the business going on out there, promotes the young eagles. I, I, I think it's a great idea, and I, I would offer up that we give consensus that this is a good idea and allow young, the EAA organization to go ahead and, and do this.
How many banners total, and who's gonna maintain them?
Well, this is the first step down the road, right? And I wanted to make it clear, I'm just a newsletter editor. I'm not part of the board, I'm not elected. So I came to you guys, to Mark first, then I came to you guys. Now I'm gonna go to the Board of the EAA and see if they want to allocate funds for this. So I would propose about ten banners. And they would promote smiling and, uh, Jonathan Mast, if you know Grand Mesa Aviation, which is the flight training, you know, a rising tide lifts all ships. So they help us a lot, we can help them and help everyone. So we'll grow our membership. Maybe we'll give some kids more meaningful things to do. Which would be great.
I, I think Commissioner Coontz brings up a good point, that, I mean, as long as you guys are willing to maintain them. I, I, I don't see a problem with it. Most of my fellow board members see.
I don't see a problem, no.
Okay. Mr. Berry, I think you've got the consensus of the board, just make sure that they're well maintained and not blown in the wind.
Yeah, well, I encourage you. I know Don comes up every once in a while. I encourage you, if you're up there playing golf or something, just go around both sides of the and see all ten of them, or whatever these guys, you know, approve. But then there's a small matter of designing them, but it's all, it's all good. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Thanks for your patience.
Oh, you're most welcome. I, uh, learned a lot. No apathy here.
We're gonna move on to agenda item five, uh, with Director Karen O'Brien. This is Board's consideration for the ratification of Chairman's signature on Task Order twenty twenty-three, twenty-two ninety-seven for Women's Wellness Connection. Hi, Karen.
Good morning.
Happy twenty twenty-three.
Happy New Year, everybody. Yes, this is a small, um, fund, but, uh, important one of our Women's Wellness Connection, and it's for, um, to start January through June of this year. Uh, we do have a scope of work that is attached to the con- that's part of the contract. And this is not new to us. This is like an annual, um, renewal for us. We've been doing the Women's Wellness Connection for many years now. And that's how we save doors for that department, so really proud of them to keep this work going. This is a contract amount for three thousand, which it was more, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Any question?
Just, just for the board's information, I did, I did already Daki sign this in the, in the previous year here, so it's just a ratification, so.
I move that we ratify the previous chairman of the Board, Don Supers' signature for the Task Order two zero two three, two two nine seven for the Women's Wellness Connection Cancer Prevention, Prevention, Early Detection from January one, twenty twenty-three through June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three in amount of three thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Second to motion? Any other discussion? Are you not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody here from DMEA?
No.
Good. Yeah, let's go ahead and do DMEA, Agenda Item seven, while we're skipping around here.
This is a, a support letter for the Low Cost Grant Committee for DMEA and Elevate to move forward with the services, internet services to Crawford, Austin, and Orchard City. Last year, twenty twenty-two, you all gave a similar letter, again, to the same funding entity. DMEA slash Elevate came back and asked if you would support their continued application to broadband fund, uh, through, at the state of Colorado.
Any questions?
This is specifically for the Hotchkiss property areas.
Let's see, uh, let's see.
Those are the underserved.
Yeah, just underserved in general. It does include Cedar Ridge, Hotchkiss, Peonia, Crawford, Austin, and Orchard City.
Standing, any other questions?
Standard, standard procedure. Well, I'll move that the Board, uh, approve and sign the letter dated on January third to the Broadband Fund in support of DMEA's request for funding from Colorado's High Cost Fund.
I second that.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, Don, who has the letter?
We'll follow up on signatures.
That puts us back at Agenda Item Two, uh, reorganization time. Robbie, would you like to pick up on this one?
Sure. So for normal operating, then you all reorganize at the beginning of each year. And you have all of the different responsibilities. And so we'll just start, you've already named the chair. And you've already named the vice chair. So moving down the line, ADA Coordinator historically has been your HR Director.
All right, that's a good idea.
County Attorney.
Maybe we need to have a deeper discussion about this.
You were just waiting for that, what are you doing?
I, I knew, I knew we couldn't get beyond that.
Yes. Joan Bear.
County Budget Officer historically has been Leona, as Finance Director. Commissioner to convey.
What does that actually mean? County Attorney Bear.
I'm happy to get back to the chair. It's not a term that we use regularly.
Yeah. I'm happy with Don staying on with that, because it sounds like it might be. Let's come back to that one.
I don't know either. Courthouse Complex Commissioner.
I've held that spot for a bit now with all the construction projects. I would still be willing to do that, given the, the next few projects we have on.
Good idea, yeah.
Okay. Courthouse Security Committee.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Wendell? Is that?
It's Wendell would be the it's the chairs.
Emergency Preparedness Director. For Stuart.
Stuart, that's a like sentence.
Emergency Preparedness Commissioner to meet with the LAPC on a quarterly basis.
That's fine.
That's, have, we shifted that around. It's typically been the vice chairs.
As a responsibility, yeah. So that'll be Mike?
Okay. FEMA and Disaster Funds, primarily on an annual basis, and as we had as Chris has applied for additional funding.
I think Chris is the best.
Board of Health Chair.
That'd be Wendell.
Board of Health Vice Chair.
Mike.
And same with Human Services.
Yep.
Retac Representative.
Is there any reason not to have Kirby in there?
It's not Kirby, it is, uh, or no, that one is Kirby, yes. Now Kirby has indicated willingness to continue. And alternate.
Does anybody talk to Kaylee?
No, but she's not indicated any, that she's stepping down, so.
That's, that's the same as, yes, I'd love to do it again.
Right, yes. Number eighteen, that, that will Lakefield.
And we want to call it a boardy.
Yeah, it's gonna be a committee, yeah.
Committee, okay.
Airport Advisory Committee, Lakefield Airport Advisory Committee, and it'll be all three of us.
All right.
And if Mr. Supers, the the resolution adopting that, I believe it indicates one. They'll have to pull that up. One county commissioner.
I've got that. Okay.
Uh, well, I think, I think, I think you might be right. We did change that. I, I would be willing to continue to serve on that. I probably been the most involved out there, so.
I think we need an eighteen A and an eighteen B splitting Blake and North Fork.
Wow, we're still waiting for
It's a TBD, yeah.
Peonia to get that started, but once they do, then we can
Assign somebody to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're saying as far as splitting the advisory committees?
Yes.
So that's done?
Yeah.
It's just out on this.
So that's done. Well, right, because it's, the concept there is that the North Fork Airport Advisory, North Fork Valley Airport Advisory Committee would be taken up by the town of Peonia, and then county would, would participate in that.
Right.
We just don't know if that committee has been formed, so it's TBD.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll wait for that clarification, if it's one.
I'm, I'm pretty sure Joan's right.
Okay.
I will go ahead.
All right. Any corrections, then? Sheriff Taylor? EMS Representative, we currently Wendell.
Would that roll over to Mike, though?
Certainly could, okay. Fair Board has been all three, depending on the, where they meet. Fair Board has been all three depending on the where they meet.
Yep. That's fine with me.
Housing Task Force has been Mike Lane.
That's something you want to continue with, Mike?
That's fine, yeah.
Seventh Judicial Representative has been all three.
That's.
Okay, Juvenile Diversion Board, Mike Lane and Brad Lewis.
I'm willing to continue.
Library Board Representative has been all three depending on where they meet.
Yep.
Okay.
Miss twenty-five?
We do.
Oh, Planning.
That's Annie and Brad.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Prevention and Recovery for Delta County, previously known as Drug-Free Delta County.
Who's on the opioid?
So that's been me and Quinn Archback, and I think that probably makes sense that that's still and still just being rolled out.
And Drug-Free Delta County, they've they haven't been very active, I know, for for a bit here.
The Drug-Free either.
Yeah, so we we probably ought to we probably ought to reach out to them and see where they're at in in process. Maybe probably ought to have that discussion as to how to proceed on that because they used to meet monthly and I I don't even know how often they're meeting anymore, so.
So are we doing that as a T V D?
Let's do that as a T V D, I think. Would you guys disagree?
Okay, as we understand that Midwestern Mental Health is not functioning, so we will skip that one. H G N C has been all three. Transit Advisory Committee has been Commissioner Lane.
That's fine.
C S B G B Board.
So, um, you know, typically the the vice chair has done the C S B G. So if if you want me to take over transit, Mike, I can do that. Take something off your plate.
That's fine, yeah.
And then and then you can take over C S B G.
Okay.
If that works.
Okay, Veterans Officer Linda Reeves with the assistance of the Commissioners and myself. You wanted to.
Yeah, just a couple, just a little follow up, Chair. So I did pull the resolution in regard to the Lakefield Airport Advisory Committee. And it does indicate that amongst other people that there would be a single B O C C member as an ex officio member. So as far as the other question that came up, I would presume that the Commissioner to Convey is in regard to thirty-eight, thirty-one, forty-one of the car order by statutes. And it really is identifying it a Commissioner to convey property, real estate property and that sort of thing. It's just kind of a, I mean, we we typically do that on a case by case basis, but there's a statute that specifically states that. I would presume that's probably usually the board chair. I think that's probably makes sense and that's traditionally.
Typically, it's been same same. We looked this up a few years ago and we determined that we needed to stay with the chairs, so.
It's kind of a term that we don't use that often.
Okay, thank you for checking that out.
Of course.
Okay, Club Twenty.
I think that's you and the rest of the board.
One Delta County.
I'd like to see that rotate around too. Don did it. I did last year. Mike could be interested now.
Share the pain, brother. Share the pain.
Grand Mesa Scenic Byway.
I will continue that. And Lindsey?
You have Darnell as the tourism.
Oh, yeah. It's kind of a still a tourism thing, so.
And then Quinn and John are the Colorado Opioid Regional Council.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, Region Ten.
Well, I'll I'll continue to serve on Region Ten.
And the Alternate.
Which one of you guys would like to be the alternate? It's so much fun.
I think both of us could be.
Okay.
As available.
Region Ten, the G Grand or Gunnison Valley Transportation Representative.
I wouldn't mind still continuing that up.
And same with the Alternate then, both of you? Tourism Cabinet.
Well, you missed forty.
River, no, that was that was the.
The Alternate, yeah.
No, that number forty is River Regional.
Oh, you've got the old.
Oh, that one has went away as well.
Okay.
Okay, Tourism Cabinet.
I've done that. I've got no problem doing it again unless you guys want.
No, that's fine.
Westdale Scenic Byway.
I can continue to do that one.
Workforce Consortium.
I've I've continued to do that. We may as we're getting closer to the end of my term, I'll probably gonna try to reach out to the other counties and make sure, see if anybody else is wanting that role, so there can be some continuance because that is is a six county amongst the six counties appointed.
Western Slope Six County.
Like Region Ten Six County.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Colorado River Water Conservation Board.
Mark River will still be our appointment there.
Is Mark Willen?
I would imagine he is. We just reappointed him.
Yeah, you haven't heard any different. Gunnison Basin Roundtable.
Yeah, I'll do that. I'm the chairman now.
Okay, Coal Mine Methane Group is not functioning. Plan Revision Cooperating Agency is all three Commissioners. Eleven County Gunnison Sage Grove Steering Committee.
It'll be you.
And then one Commissioner.
I'll help you out, Robbie.
C C I Committees.
I I'd be more than happy to continue to represent on all the committees and we have Annie appointed as the Health and Human Services Representative.
And Don, particularly on public lands and natural resources. Those are topics I get a general interest in, so.
Absolutely.
Help you out anytime you need.
Perfect.
Okay.
And I move that the Board adopt the twenty twenty-three County Reorganization as has been stated in the last few minutes here.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So be done. Back to Agenda Item Three, which would be Discussion Regarding Vacancy County Surveyor. Who's got that one? Is that you?
Um, I I can I can lead it off. We, as everybody knows, we did not get a surveyor elected to Delta County. We have two applicants interested in that position. That is a position that's appointed by the County Commissioners. Both these gentlemen are certified land surveyors residing in Delta County. One, Ken Schaaf, the other one Chuck Dubs. Once I found out there was two of them, I told them that we would most likely have a work session where the three of us planning, county attorney can sit down with them, make sure everybody understands the roles and requirements. And that way it would be a fair environment for both of them to, so when we make that selection. Unless unless this, unless my fellow Commissioners want to do things differently.
And this is a paid position.
This is a paid position. It it's not much paid.
Yeah.
But it is a paid position. And we we really, we didn't think we were gonna get anybody that wanted to apply for this because this is technically filling the elected position. There's a lot of counties out there that don't have this position filled and they they have to contract out a a surveyor under contract for that. But both these gentlemen understand that this is the elected position and they are willing to serve in that appointed position since we didn't have one elected, so.
So a couple of things to keep in mind, Commissioner, Chair Commissioners. This appointment, first of all, it would need to, it it can't go, I don't think you're gonna take action today, but it can't go into effect until there's a vacancy. And which I believe is ten, and what we talked about, okay. And and the statute encourages the Board using the word shall to make the appointment within six months of that vacancy. So clearly, you know, we're at a game and that's and that's great that some of this groundwork is done. The appointment would be until the next general election. So that's something to keep in mind, which I think that's twenty twenty-four, so we're really, the appointment is until that point. So just so you know, it's not to fill the necessarily, like oftentimes they're fill a particular position that was that was open, that someone ran for. This is an appointment until the next general election.
Yeah. So this this is a contract position for two years, variable hours. Technically, it's not a contract position.
I mean, it's 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 an appointment to like this position.
Right, right.
And the.
But will they sign an employment contract or something out of that?
I don't think they do. I mean, our other electives don't do that.
Okay.
So i- i- in the in the statute does not have a lot of detail. It talks about a qualified and suitable individual. So I mean, I would think that qualified simply means probably, I I would presume.
P L S.
That that they're a land surveyor.
Yeah. And there's been a job description and they understand that's they're they're both, they're both, they're both land surveyors. They understand the position. I my my whole thought with, and John and I, I'd met with John before trying to get this thing rolling, make sure we got it posted. Because I I just don't want our our people that have applications within planning, I don't want them waiting. I'd rather get this get this rolling, get it moving as quick as possible because we can see what kind of a backlog can get recreated when the when the surveyor isn't in there to sign, so.
In in the Board, as you remember, adopted a resolution a while back, putting you know, putting everyone on notice. Lindsey also sent out public information. So so it's been it's been pushed out there as well, and that's that's great. I mean, it's that we have two interested, qualified and interested parties, so that's that's good to hear.
Any other questions or discussion on the County Surveyor position?
I have none.
Okay.
Lindsey set up a time with them?
Please do.
I'll get you the information.
Thank you.
Uh, speaking of Lindsey, let's go with the B O C C schedule.
I guess.
Happy New Year, everyone. So we have Republican meeting tonight at six.
Uh, that's canceled until ten.
Uh, reschedule.
Yeah.
And then again on the tenth, I just wanted we, Mike had said there might be some swearing in officials. Do we know what?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Yeah.
I'll make sure to get that on everybody's calendar. Yeah, the Water and Land Committee, January twelfth, eleven A M. Then another B O C C meeting, January seventeen. January seventeen, there's a war of that road and bridge work session on January seventeenth. Uh, Chief Judge Patrick meeting the state of the seventh judicial. Do you guys all have that one?
Yeah, and that'll be in Montrose.
Yeah, it looks like there's, you can join by consuming.
It's at the five thirty P M.
So it doesn't look like there's.
I thought it was a meeting.
You thought it was soon?
I thought it was.
Yeah, that's.
It's actually a Web X. By the way, she said it is a Web X. The judicial uses Web X.
That changes a lot, please.
January nineteenth, you have coffee with the Commissioner. Because I I would like to have somebody join us maybe on the office, like a special guest for these copies with the Commissioners, might be fun. And that's what I have right now, four months in January.
Robbie, Mike, you guys have anything else for us? Perry?
Do we need to designate a newspaper, radio?
We'll do that on the table.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else for me?
I don't think so.
Very good. Since we're running behind time, let's move right into County Attorney time.
Sure, thank you. Good morning again, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. So I have two items on for the Board's consideration this morning. The first is under regular session. And that's the Board's consideration of a letter of agreement regarding notification process of nodums involving North Fork Valley Airport. This came to my attention from Mike Flosson, who's the manager of North Fork Aviation at the North Fork Valley Airport. He had been contacted by the F A A in regard to nodums, specifically the Denver Air Route Traffic Control Center. And really, the issue, as I understood it, and as Mike understands it is, because of the rural nature and the uncontrolled aspect of of the some of these airports like this, is there are times that an air an aircraft may check nodums, say if someone's flying into North Fork and they're and they're airborne and then say there is no nodum. And they're airborne and then another, a a nodum gets gets issued at that point, well, there's really no communication, no ability to communicate. I don't understand all the details, but that's the concept. Of course, something like this happens because there were the horrible triatic accident somewhere, right? There was a a snowplow that ended up on a on a rural airport when the in the nodum was there, but the person in the air didn't have that that ability to or hadn't been notified that, you know, these these sorts of things. So so what I understand is is all this requires is is one additional phone call from our manager up there to the to the Denver area Route Traffic Control Center. I talked to Mike by email about that. He said, do you have any problem with that at all? It's 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 two phone calls instead of one. And so so that's really all that is. He doesn't have any problem with this. So I would recommend the Board go ahead and sign the letter of agreement that's already been digitally signed by Melissa Booth, who's the air traffic manager of the Denver. uh, that's already been digitally signed by Melissa Booth, who's the air traffic manager of the Denver ARTCC.
Can you hand the letter?
Yes, I have an original. It should be in your packet though as well, but.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, but I have an original here, yes.
Is this a new, this is something new for the, why does Blakefield have the same one, I guess, as one?
I don't have an answer for that. This came from, 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 uh, I don't know whether there is a different communication process at a airport such as, uh, Lakefield. Remember, Lakefield is a FAA airport where Norfolk Valley Airport is not.
Is not.
And so whether they communicate up into the FAA system differently, I, I don't, I don't have that information.
Why move that we approve the letter of agreement regarding notification process of the NoDAMs system involving Norfolk Valley Airport. It'll be effective January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second motion.
Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 There you, I could get that back or look at it as just a signed copy. It's fine, then I can forward on.
If you want to just scan and send it to me.
And send it to you. Okay, so I'll take the vision. Thank you. Okay, the are we ready, Chair? Are we ready to go ahead and proceed?
We are.
Executive session.
Do you want to do the jail report first?
Oh, yeah. Jail report for Monday, January, we'll start with Monday, December twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. Male inmates, County Jail forty-seven. Female inmates, County Jail six. Transgender inmates, County Jail zero. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, six. Female inmates, Department of Corrections, one. Transgender, Department of Corrections, zero for a total of sixty. Average daily inmate population for the week of twelve nineteen through twelve twenty-six was sixty-six. Jail report from Monday, January second, twenty-twenty-three. Male inmates, County Jail forty-six. Female inmates, County Jail six. Transgender inmates, County Jail zero. Male inmates, Department of Corrections, five. Female inmates, Department of Corrections, one. Transgender inmates, Department of Corrections, zero for a total of fifty-eight. Average inmate population for the week of twelve twenty-six through one, two of twenty-three was sixty-six point three six.
Thank you. Excuse me. Uh, I have one item under executive session and that would be Discussion Regarding Purchase of Real Property uh, that is pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six four oh two, subsection four, subsection A. Uh, the topic is Discussion Regarding the Potential Purchase of Real Estate for County Purposes in the Delta Area. So I'd recommend that the Board go into executive session for those purposes. I'll remind, uh, this, this is a, an executive session where the recording continues. Uh, but I do remind the Board and all present in the executive session to limit your discussion to the applicable legal question. The applicable topic discussions.
Very good. I'll move that the Board going to executive session. The people in that executive session will be the three Commissioners, Terry Stevenson, Robin the Valley, John Bear. Uh, Lindsey, are you going to stick around? Okay, um, and Lindsey Mitchell. And we will adjourn directly following.
You can, you can.
Oh, this is, I'm sorry, uh, Discussion of Purchase of Real Property under uh, subsection twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for A of the Colorado Revised Statutes.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for attending.